Hello everyone, this is Grandpa Ron here again. Hope everyone is well and happy. I thank you for joining in this basic Bible study. Today we're on session nine. And by way of review, just remember that in session eight, chapter eight of the book of Genesis, we saw how the flood of Noah lasted about a year. He was in the boat in the ark for about a year, and they were relieved to get out of that ark when the water subsided. And Noah immediately built an altar and worshiped God. And I'm sure it was a time of thanksgiving for bringing them through that worldwide flood, which wiped everything on the face of the earth out. The only survivors were the eight people in the ark. And so Noah praised God for getting them through. He had trusted God during all the years it took to build the ark. He trusted him during the flood, and he trusted God now that he's out of the ark. And remember, God made a promise in the very last verse of chapter eight. He said, "While the earth remains, seed time and harvest, and cold and heat, and summer and winter, and day and night shall not cease." So he's saying from this point on, all of these things are going to happen. There might be different degrees of heat, and summer and winter, but the earth is going to continue to go through these cycles as long as it remains. Now moving on to chapter nine, we're going to learn some amazing things. Remember that from the time of Adam, the first man, the creation of the world, and then all that's in it, up until the flood, was over 1,600 years. So now in the next few chapters, we're going to see some things occurring at a very rapid pace, and we're going to see some huge time spans covered. But because it's compressed in the narrative, it makes it seem like things are happening very quickly. So we're going to try to point out as we go along that some of these things are unfolding over long periods of time, but they're compressed in this narrative. So let's look at chapter nine, verse one. "And God blessed Noah and his sons; and he said to them, 'Be fruitful and multiply, and fill the earth.'" Now that sounds familiar, doesn't it? Because that's what Adam was told, Adam and Eve, "Fill the earth." "And the fear of you," verse two, "and the fear of you, and the terror of you, shall be on every beast of the earth, and on every bird of the sky, with everything that creeps on the ground, and all fish of the sea, and to your hand they are given." So it appears that there was some type of harmony previously between humans and the animal world, but now man is going to have not only dominion, as he had from the very beginning, but now there's going to be fear in the animals of man. Verse three. "Every moving thing that is alive shall be food for you; I give all to you, as I gave the green plant." So remember, when the world was first created, God gave man and animals the green plants to eat. Everybody was vegetarian. Now after the flood, God is saying, "I'm giving you everything to eat, both plants and animals." Now later on, we're going to see that there were some dietary restrictions placed on Israel, on the Jewish people. And we'll talk about why that occurred when we get to that much later. But right here, there's only one condition given in these following verses. Remember when God told man he was given all green plants to eat, there was one exception, and that was the tree of life, I beg your pardon, the tree of the knowledge of good and evil in the Garden of Eden. He said, "You can't eat that tree, but you can eat all the other plants." But here we have a similar situation where God is saying, "I've given you all the animals. They can be food for you, but there's going to be one exception." So let's see what that exception is. Verse four. "Only you shall not eat flesh with its life, that is, its blood." So unlike ravenous carnivores, they were not to eat flesh with the blood still in it, with anything still alive. You know, you see carnivores, they will start eating something before it's even dead, but God is saying, "Don't eat anything with its blood still in it." "And surely I will require your lifeblood; from every beast I will require it, and from every man, from every man's brother, I will require the life of man." Under what circumstances are we talking here? What's he talking about? Well, we find out in verse six. "Whoever sheds man's blood, by man his blood shall be shed; for in the image of God he made man. And as for you, be fruitful and multiply; populate the earth abundantly, and multiply in it." So in order for man to multiply and grow, it would be hindered and limited if people were murdering one another. They'd be right back where they were before the flood, where we read that violence filled the land. God doesn't want that, and he wants man not to forget that man is special. God created man in his own image, he's special. And we can understand how these survivors might get the impression that man wasn't worth very much, because just God just wiped out potentially billions of people on the earth. And maybe man wasn't so special, but here God is saying, "No, man is very special, and you are not to commit murder, you're not to kill one another, and if you do, you're going to be killed." And how are you going to be killed? Well, let's go back to verse six. It says, "Whoever sheds man's blood, by man his blood shall be shed." So this is actually an institution of human government, because somebody would have to be in charge and control to make the decision that this murder has been committed, and then to punish it through death. So this is really, in this simple, simple verse, the institution of the very first stages of human government. Before the flood, it was kind of every man for himself, you know, the law of the wild west. And here we have the institution of human government and the institution of capital And we won't debate the issue of capital punishment, whether it's good or bad or whatever. We'll see more discussion of this later. But let it suffice to say, here we have in this simple verse, the institution of human government and capital punishment, but clearly God wants his earth populated. Then God spoke to Noah and to his sons with him, saying, "Now behold, I myself do establish my covenant with you, and with your descendants after you." Remember, covenant's kind of an agreement, a contract. But this is a one sight, that God is creating this on his own. "And with every living creature that is with you, the birds, the cattle, every beast of the earth with you, of all that comes out of the ark, even every beast of the earth, even fish and things that weren't in the ark. And I establish my covenant with you, and all flesh shall never again be cut off by the water of the flood, neither shall there again be a flood to destroy the earth." Doesn't say there won't be floods, it says a flood to destroy the earth. There's never going to be a flood like this to wipe out the earth. From now on, if there are floods, they're going to be limited. "And God said, 'This is a sign of the covenant which I make between me and you, and every living creature that is with you, for all successive generations. I set my bow in the cloud, and that shall be for a sign of a covenant between me and the earth; and it shall come about, when I bring a cloud over the earth, that the bow shall be seen in the cloud. And I will remember my covenant, which is between me and you, and every living creature of all flesh, and never again shall the water become a flood to destroy all flesh. When the bow is in the cloud, then I will look upon it to remember the everlasting covenant between God and every living creature of all flesh that is on the earth.'" And God said to Noah, "This is the sign of the covenant which I have established between me and all flesh that is on the earth." Now remember, before the flood, there were no clouds, there was no rain. It was a huge invisible vapor canopy that surrounded the earth. But to feed the flood, to create the flood, God caused this vapor canopy to collapse. Now, after the flood, that vapor canopy doesn't exist. The weather's different. We've got clouds, we've got wind. It's going to rain, which it never did before. It was kind of a mist prior to the flood, but now we're going to have rain. And this sun shining through water droplets in this rain is going to create a rainbow. We see rainbows all the time, and it's a reminder to us of God's promise that yes, there may be floods, but nothing like Noah's, the flood of Noah, which wiped out the whole earth. When we talk about a rainbow, we're talking about an actual, symbolically, a bow, like a bow and arrow. And he's hung this bow in the clouds, like I've hung this bow up to sign a peace. It's not going to be used, this flood's not going to be used aggressively anymore. So that's kind of cool. Now we get into some genealogies, and these genealogies are going to continue all the way through chapter 10. And we're going to just hit some highlights in them. This is where a lot of people stop reading the Bible, just, you know, they've only read eight chapters, nine chapters, and now boom, they're going to give up, because these genealogies seem repetitive, they seem boring, who can figure out all these names? I'll embarrass myself actually trying to pronounce some of them, but I know you'll forgive me for that. But it's very important to have these genealogies for several reasons, and we'll talk about that as we go along. But let's see what these genealogies were. Verse 18. "Now the sons of Noah, who came out of the ark, were Shem, Ham, and Japheth. And Ham was the father of Canaan." So it actually mentions, for some reason, one of their sons. We'll see why a little bit later. "These three were the sons of Noah, and from these the whole earth was populated." So for three people, the whole earth is populated. And by the end of chapter 10, going into chapter 11, a huge amount of time is going to pass. We're going to see in these verses, just the repopulation of the earth, going at light speed as we go through these genealogies. Verse 20. "Then Noah began farming and planted a vineyard; and he drank of the wine and became drunk, and uncovered himself inside his tent." Well, this is a bad thing. He's acting like the heathens acted before the flood. He's planted a vineyard, made wine out of the grapes, got drunk, and now he's uncovered himself in his tent. That doesn't have a lot of significance to us, but back then, this was very significant and something that ought not to have been done. And it says, "Ham," verse 22, "the father of Canaan, saw the nakedness of his father and told his two brothers outside." Well, it was one thing for Noah to do this, and for us to see that he's a sinner just like everybody else. You know, we may have Noah on a high pedestal, but he was sinning just like everybody else. He had that sin nature. And God gives us examples throughout the Bible of these patriarchs that did great and wonderful things for God. God used them dramatically, but they were yet sinners, and they needed a way to be forgiven of those sins. And we're going to talk about that as we go all the way through the Bible. But it was one thing for Noah to sin, but his son dishonored him. It was expected that children honor their parents, but instead, Ham kind of mocked him and made fun of it, and joked about it, and almost kind of elevated himself, like, "Boy, look at him, you know, I'm better than that, than my father." So he mocked and ridiculed him. And we're going to see in a subsequent verse, it goes even a little further than that. Chapter 23, I mean, verse 23. "But Shem and Japheth, his brothers, took a garment, and laid it on their shoulders, both their shoulders, and walked backward, and covered the nakedness of their father; and their faces were turned away, so they did not see their father's nakedness. So these other two brothers respected their father, and they covered him up without fanfare and gloating over it, and sinning themselves, and dishonoring him. So they basically backed into the tent and dropped a covering over him. They were showing respect and honor for their dad." Verse 24. "When Noah awoke from his wine, he knew what his youngest son had done to him." So it implies that Ham had done something more than just see him and make fun of it, and dishonor him in that way. He may have had a hand in actually inducing his father to get drunk, or encouraging him or something like that. We don't know, it doesn't say, but the implication is that it goes beyond just seeing him and dishonoring him through mocking and that kind of thing. And so, and here we're going to see a principle that we need to remember as we study the whole Bible, and that is the implication of sin, the long-lasting effect of sin. We're going to find out as we study down the road, that God has provided a mechanism for the forgiveness of sin. We're all sinners. We all fall short of the glory of God, the Bible says. The wages of sin is death, the Bible says. But God has provided a mechanism for us to be saved through Jesus Christ. He willingly gave himself as a sacrifice for man's sin. And if man believes that, believes God, believes that Christ came and died for his sins, my sin, your sin, he shall be saved, forgiven, and saved from the penalty of death. But the effects of that sin may continue for ages and ages. So even though the sin is forgiven, that sin has an impact that we don't necessarily see. Sometimes we can see it plainly, but sometimes we don't see it. But here, we see an example of the impact of this sin, which on the surface, almost seems trivial to us, but it has impacted history for thousands of years. So let's see what this impact was. Go back to verse 24. "When Noah awoke from his wine, he knew what his youngest son had done to him, so he said, 'Cursed be Canaan! A servant of servants he shall be to his brothers.' He also said, 'Blessed be the Lord, the God of Shem, and let Canaan be his servant.' May God enlarge Japheth, and let him dwell in the tents of Shem, and let Canaan be his servant." So here Noah has placed a curse on Ham's child, Canaan. And this curse is going to last for a long time, and it's going to impact history in ways we can't even imagine now, but we're going to read about through subsequent chapters. So this one act of dishonoring his father, and whatever else was involved, has an impact in the history of the world for generations and generations and generations to come. And we need to keep that in mind. When we sin, there's impacts that we don't even know about, but we can be sure those impacts are there, even though we're forgiven, even though we're saved from the penalty of death, there's still, the word is consequences. This sin had long-lasting consequences, and our sins, even though forgiven, have long-lasting consequences. We need to keep that in mind, and we're going to see that over and over and over and over again in the Bible as we study. Verse 28. "And Noah lived three hundred and fifty years after the flood; so all the days of Noah were nine hundred and fifty years, and he died." Huge amount of time. Now as we go on, we're going to find out that man's lifespan starts to go down, 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 down. But it's amazing the number of years that Noah lived, and he even lived 350 years after he came out of that ark. That's amazing. We're going to go ahead and do chapter 10, not doing it justice, because it's a lot of meat, but because this is a basic study, we're going to kind of go over this quickly, because to go over it in the detail it deserves would take weeks of study just on this one chapter. But let's look at chapter 10 as this genealogy continues. Now these, chapter 10, verse one. "Now these are the records of the generations of Shem, Ham, and Japheth, the sons of Noah; and sons were born to them after the flood. The sons of Japheth were Gomer, Magog, Medai, and Jabin, and Tubal, and Meshach, and Teres. And the sons of Gomer, which was one of these sons, were Ashkenaz, and Rifath, and Togarmah." I told you that I would butcher these up. "And the sons of another one of his sons was Elisha, Elisha, Tarsus, Kidham, and Odenim." Says, "From these the coastlands of the nations were separated into their lands, everyone according to his language, according to their families, into their nations." So there's a couple of interesting things to note here. One is that clearly this isn't an all-inclusive genealogy. In the Hebrew language, there's some kind of a systematic way they're listing this here that I don't comprehend. There are scholars that do, they figured all this out, but it's a memory aid, so they can remember these genealogies, these main, important first births and everything. So it's kind of a systematic approach. But the real interesting thing to me is this terminology, that they were separated into their lands, everyone according to his language. Well, if they all came off of the ark, shouldn't they all be speaking the same language? But anyway, they're separated by language, so they're not all speaking the same language. Keep that in mind, and we're going to see why in the next chapter. And it even tells in these verses, kind of where they settled, and that's interesting. Now there's scholars that have tracked this and done tremendous amount of research, and they have all kinds of maps with arrows showing where all these different groups migrated to and populated the whole earth from just these three men, but we're not going to get that detailed in this discussion. So those were the sons of Japheth and some of his grandsons. Let's go on to verse six. "And the sons of Ham were Cush, and Mizraim, and Put, and Canaan; and the sons of Cush were Seba, Havelah, Sabta, Ramah, and Sabtika; and the sons of Ramah were Sheba and Deidun." Now Cush became the father of Nimrod. He became a mighty one on the earth. So here's a little side story about Nimrod. "He was a mighty hunter before the Lord; therefore it is said, 'Like Nimrod, a mighty hunter before the Lord.'" "And the beginning of his kingdom was Babel, and Eric, and Akad, and Kalne, and the land of Shinar. From that land he went forth into Assyria, and built Nineveh, and Rehoboth, Ir, and Kala, and Ressin between Nineveh and Kela, that is the great city. And Mizraim became the father of Ludum, and Anamim, and Lebamim, and Nap to him, and Patressim, and Castilhim, from which came the Philistines, and Capterim. Canaan became the father of Sidon, his firstborn, and Heath, and the Jebusite, and the Amorite, and the Gergishite, and the Hivite, and the Arkite, and the Sinite, and the Arvidite, and the Zimerite, and the Hamothite. And afterwards the families of Canaanites were spread abroad, and the territory of the Canaanites extended from Sidon as you go toward Gerar, as far as Gaza, as you go towards Sodom and Gomorrah, and Adma the Zebuim, as far as Lashah. These were the sons of Ham, according to their families, and again, according to their languages, by their lands, by their nations." The only thing I want to point out in this long genealogy, and here, for the sons of Ham, became, some of these peoples became Israel's most terrible and terrifying enemies, and we'll read about them later. Again, let me remind you that this seems compressed, but when we read through these lists, we're talking about generations and hundreds of years, even growing into thousands, but hundreds of years. So don't forget that, that this is a very compressed narrative, but we're talking about a long time span here, a long time span. Then finally, we get to the sons of Shem. Now remember, Shem was blessed by Noah, so let's see what the genealogies say about Shem. So let's see what the genealogies say about Shem. Verse 21. And also to Shem, the father of all the children of Eber and the older brother of Japheth, children were born. The sons of Shem were Elam, and Asher, and Arpashad, and Lud, and Aram. And the sons of Aram were Uz, and Hul, and Neger, and Mash. And Arpashad became the father of Sheila. And Sheila became the father of Eber. And two sons were born to Eber. The name of the one was Pelig. For in his days the earth was divided. We'll come back to that. And his brother's name was Jokten. And Jokten became the father of Almodad, and Shelaph, and Hazor, Maveth, and Jirah, and Hadiram, and Uzal, and Dekla, and Obel, and Abimal, and Sheba, and Ophir, and Havelah, and Jobab. All these were sons of Jokten. Now their settlement extended from Mesha as you go towards Sepher, the hill country of the east. These are the sons of Shem, according to their families. Again, according to their languages, by their lands, according to their nations. And then in summary in verse 32, "These are the families of the sons of Noah, according to their genealogies, by their nations. And out of these, the nations were separated on the earth after the flood." So a couple of comments. One is, a lot of these location names, we're not exactly sure where they are because a lot of them don't coincide with towns named the same now. So some of these locations are still vague and yet to be rediscovered. But I want to go back to verse 25. Says, "The name of one was Pelig." And Pelig in Hebrew means division. And it'd be unusual for mother and father to name their son Division. You want to name him something uplifting. But so this is probably a name that he acquired. Something happened and he acquired this name when it happened. For in his days the earth was divided. Well, what does that mean? The earth divided? Something must have happened during this time of Pelig to somehow divide the earth. But we're just left kind of hanging here with this verse. And this is an example of how we can read a verse, and it seems insignificant, but it actually contains a clue to something we're gonna find out later. And so next time when we go into verse, into chapter 11, we're gonna find out why there were these different languages, how the earth was divided, and why. And see what happens after, during, and after this repopulation of the earth. Anyway, very interesting chapters. And I hope this has been meaningful to you. And next time, I'm excited to start looking at chapter 11 when we find out about this, so the division of the earth. Anyway, have a great rest of your day. Thanks for checking in. God bless. Bye-bye.